A member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I'd like to welcome you all tonight, the candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library for their help. Due to the current pandemic, we are limiting attendees to the candidates and necessary volunteers. Guidelines for social distancing and the wearing of masks are also being followed. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum. And the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from LWV Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of the public. If you would like to submit questions for a future forum, visit our Facebook page, League of Women Voters Rochester, Minnesota for information. They must be submitted at least 48 hours in advance. As there is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time and setting such as this, please feel free to contact the candidate's campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all candidates running for office for offering to serve their community and for the enormous time, dedication, and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage all our members as individuals, as we encourage you to get involved with your community and the political party of choice. Welcome to tonight's forum, which features candidates for the Rochester Public School School Board, Seat 1. Candidates for this seat are Don Barlow and Justin Cook. Each candidate will have two minutes to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by LWV Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the public, which were submitted in advance. Candidates will have 75 seconds to each answer the question. The candidates will then have two minutes each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire minute for your answer, but please do finish your sentence when your time is up. We'd like to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate also has three 30-second rebuttal cards. These can be used at any point after each candidate has answered the question. Only one rebuttal card may be used per question. Please put the card in the basket after you have used it. The timekeeper tonight is LWV Rochester member Lori Campbell. Questions from the public were checked to ensure they follow our guidelines by LWV Rochester members Maggie Brimajoin, Jane Callahan, Deb Duffy-Smet, and Kathy Swetzel. Asking questions will be Jordan Shear from the Post Bulletin and Sam Gill from the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce. With that, we are ready to begin, and candidate Cook will begin with their opening statements.
Well, thank you so much for hosting this event. It's incredibly valuable to have an informed citizenry. And that is one of the reasons that I'm so excited for an opportunity to serve on the school board. My name is Justin Cook. I'm running for school board. I moved to Rochester about three years ago with my very busy household. My wife is a resident in pathology at Mayo. I'm an intellectual property lawyer, and I've been working remotely for a company in New York for some years now. I have children in fifth grade, third grade, and kindergarten at Jefferson Elementary, and I have a preschooler at Hoover Early Learning. I'm running because I want to present a bold vision of Rochester as a center of excellence in public education. Over the last couple of years, in the debate over facilities planning for the district, there was lots explained about the most efficient way to deliver education to students at the lowest cost per pupil. Efficiency is important, but so is paying attention to what is lost. I think smaller schools offer better value for educational outcomes. I think they're safer, they lend themselves to camaraderie amongst students, and they provide an important sense of community amongst the students themselves and their families. I also think that K-8 education is wonderful. Our only K-8 option in Rochester is vastly oversubscribed, and expanding that option is something I am keenly interested in. Finally, the greatest potential in our community right now is meaningfully addressing educational equity. I am impatient for meaningful progress, and I can't wait to get to work.
Thank you, candidate Cook. Candidate Barlow?
Hi, good evening. I'm Don Barlow. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, Chamber of Commerce, and the Rochester Public Library. A little bit about myself, I'm originally from Anchorage, Alaska, where I met and married my wife, Teresa, and we were blessed there to have six children. I retired from the Anchorage Fire Department after serving 27 years. Moved to Rochester in 2000 and have served on several city and county boards to include the Police Civil Service Commission, the County Social Services Advisory Board, currently the Cradle II Career Leadership Table. Additionally, I'm pastor at Rochester Community Baptist Church. And in 2016, I was elected to serve in Seat 1 on the Rochester Public Schools. I look forward to this evening's opportunity to engage in meaningful conversation with you.
Thank you, candidate Barlow. This first question is for you, candidate Barlow. What is the responsibility of a school board member to the school district and to the community?
Well, by law, a school board member's responsibility to the school district and community are actually very similar. That is to ensure that, number one, first and foremost, budget is something we are tasked with, and we do our best to ensure that our schools have the funding they need to deliver high-quality education. And then, on a personal level in terms of community, I always have believed in the importance of accessibility and accountability. So I believe that's part of any elected member, but more specifically, a school board member's responsibility in response to the community. It's my hope and belief that if given the opportunity to serve a second term, I'll be able to actively demonstrate that.
Great, thank you. Candidate Cook?
Absolutely. Accountability and transparency have to be a cornerstone in order to maintain the trust of the community. But I would posit leadership, laying out a vision for where we want to be in 15 years and in 20 years. I think that that's essential, because you can't run a school board or you can't run a district by waiting for the community to tell you what it is that they want in the future. You have to lay out a vision. That's it.
All right, great. Thank you, candidate Cook. For our second question, I'm going to go to the Post Bulletin, and candidate Cook, you will answer first.
The Rochester School Board has been informed by Rochester Public Schools that they could be looking at a deficit in the coming years, which could be made worse by the current pandemic. So as a school board member, what do you see as some potential ways to address such a drastic budget shortfall that could be coming?
Yes, thank you for the question. So by the 2022 to 23 school year, the shortfall in operating funds could be as much as $10 million to $15 million. This budget doesn't have a lot of fat in it that is ready to be trimmed. That has already been done over the past 10 years. There's been multiple rounds of budget adjustments or budget reductions. So it would be very difficult. One of the things that I think is important is that the community ought to have a say in the amount of funding that they'd like their schools to have. There's multiple ways that that can be done. The state is where the bulk of the revenue comes from in our district, and in every district for that matter. Elections matter. If you haven't already, talk to your Senate candidates, talk to your House and state legislature candidates. Understand the importance, even in a pandemic coronavirus situation, of funding for education. The other area is taking a look at the operating levy and seeing if it makes sense to increase Rochester Public Schools' operating levy to achieve parity with the top 15 districts in the state.
Similar to candidate Cook, we share very similar views regarding that. The budget, truth and reality as before, it's a challenge. It really requires, I believe, not just continuity of business as usual or continuance of the same, but it does require knowledge of and previous involvement with. And so there is an important role that community input has. I observe that even regarding the question of a middle school, a potential closure. And there's been a lot of opportunity to solicit community input and even receive a lot of unsolicited community input. But that is important, and I encourage the community to be aware, to ask, as has been suggested, to reach out to our local elected officials. But more importantly, become more directly involved, attending board meetings, so you can be aware and not simply reactive to the news of potential closures and/or layoffs. I'm not suggesting that that is what will occur, but by your involvement, you can at least be aware of prior to it hitting the news.
Great, thank you, candidate Barlow. Candidate Barlow, this next question will start with you. During this pandemic, where do you think we are doing well? And where do you think we need to do more work?
Well, district administration was quick to respond to the mandate that was thrust upon not only independent school district 535, but every school district throughout the state of Minnesota. It was not necessarily ideal or perfect. This virus pandemic is not ideal or perfect. So I think we've done well in coming up with options which are widely known now. And what we can potentially have done differently and better was to, in terms of staff support, had a better plan or a different plan in terms of some of our programs that provided onsite childcare and support for our working staff members. And that created a great deal of angst, if you will, and disappointment. And so those are two things. There probably are many others that, given time, we could look at, but those are the two I'll offer at this point.
All right, thank you, candidate Barlow. Candidate Cook?
So I guess I'll start with the improvements. There was a 140-member task force that was assembled in order to come up with these various back-to-school plans under the three different models that were laid out by the governor. I've spoken with lots of folks that would have really liked to be on that task force or have some more visibility into it, community organizations, nonprofits, that have a vested interest in the success of our students and our future as a community, that weren't there, that weren't at the table. So, you know, I'm not sure what the disconnect was there, but I think that even though there were a lot of people on that task force, it failed to capture the full scope of the community that could have been brought to bear. And then the second thing is, and I sat through in July and August with angst and uncertainty, like so many parents, wondering, is it going to be hybrid? Is it going to be distance learning? And if it's hybrid, which days will the kids be in school and which not? Transparency and getting that information out as fast as possible to parents goes a long ways. Even if they don't like the answer, that way they can start making plans and making arrangements for whatever they need to do. Predictability is huge.
Thank you. This next question, I'm going to turn it to Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, and candidate Cook, you'll start.
The COVID-19 pandemic has caused significant pressure on many in our community, including working parents with school-age kids. As children head back to school and prepare for remote learning this fall, what steps can be taken to help parents manage both work and their kids' remote learning schedules?
Yeah, unfortunately, and I've certainly been struggling with this one, just like every other parent, every morning, I start out from 8:00 until 11:00. My wife doesn't have any flexibility in her work hours. I've been able to rearrange some things at my house so that I start from 8:00 until 11:00 with the kids at the kitchen table every morning. There's three Chromebooks up, everybody's doing different lessons, and I'm running between all three of them, trying frantically and mostly unsuccessfully to either address the technical issues or figure out the multiplication problem or help one to do phonics recitations or whatever the issue is. I'm not totally clear what can be done differently other than to recognize in another year that this has all happened and that there are serious gaps that are going to persist. If there are great ideas out there, I certainly want to know them that makes any of this easier. I've even spoken with some of the homeschool families that I know, and there's no easy answers there either. Unfortunately, I don't have a great response to that one, other than I feel the pain.
Thank you, candidate Cook. Candidate Barlow?
Well, one idea has already been presented by the chamber. In fact, the current chamber president had reached out to the school board, school district, to offer an inquiry of support, collaboration, and a willingness to provide leadership with business partners. I think that is a key aspect. We're in this together, and I believe as such, we have to learn to work together. Collaboration is a huge part of that. And while we each share a degree of pain, I'm a grandparent, and I see my daughters hustling, doing many of the very same things that candidate, my goodness, Justin alluded to a moment ago. So I think we have a great opportunity to continue down this pathway of working together, acknowledging the problems, but more so working towards solutions.
Thank you, candidate Barlow, and this next question starts with you. Should the district continue contracts with the school resource officers? If not, what should the replacement be to maintain discipline?
Certainly, very good, very good question. And short answer is, I don't believe so. I guess that's not so short, but I don't believe so. I've done some research. In fact, today I visited the Rochester Police Department website to better get an understanding of their mission statement. And while there's a reference to the police liaison program that they have officers assigned to, it struck me that even the usage of that term is not consistent with the district's operational policies or procedures, because we no longer even reference police liaisons or call school resource officers. But beyond that, we've heard from students who have expressed their fear, trepidation, unease, not because it's something the officers who are assigned in the schools, but perhaps the trauma that they have been subject to or seen. And that's a carryover. So we do know that perhaps a better resource would be therapists, counselors, social workers, and I look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Cook?
So unfortunately, I'm going to try to not sound too much like a lawyer here, but I will quarrel with the question or the premise of the question just a little bit. The school resource officers are not in the schools to maintain discipline. Since 2015, in the agreement with the Office of Civil Rights, that's been explicitly clear that the school resource officers are not there to maintain discipline. They're there to respond to emergencies and to presumably deter and respond to any criminal activity. They should not be, and in fact, as best I know, and I look forward to learning more about this and continuing to study it, they are not involved in disciplinary actions in the classrooms or otherwise. What I am concerned about with the school resource officers is very much in line with what Don has just described. If our students that are bringing with them the entire world around them and the experience of this summer and George Floyd and all the rest, if our students are coming into their learning environment and they see a marked squad car on the outside and a uniformed officer, that is not, or there is great potential that that's going to disengage those students and prevent our schools from unleashing their full potential and the opportunity that flows from that to our community. So yes, I think social workers and the like are the right replacement for school resource officers, but I look forward to learning more about it.
Thank you, candidate Cook. And we're coming to you for the first response to this next question. So what criteria should we be using when making decisions to close a school? For example, Fridell?
I think that the first criteria has to be, what do we want our community to be like in 10 or 12 years? It can't be about the students in the school today and the families that selected that school today. What kind of community do we want to foster? And how do we want our community to be a decade from now? Not the students that are there today. And then, one of the primary considerations, if not the primary consideration, has to be, does it advance educational equity? It's been an issue in our district for too long. It's been an identified issue for too long. And, you know, the other thing is, we ought to be able to learn from elsewhere. If you haven't already, tune into Nice White Parents, the New York Times podcast, and convince me that you can't find analogues between Fridell and the school that's described there. District-wide options, I think, especially when they have structural advantages over their neighborhood peers, are problematic per se. There may be a place for district-wide options, but not when they have a structural advantage. And I view being a smaller school as a structural advantage. I'd like all of our schools to have those same advantages, but in the interim, I guess that's where I'll leave it.
Great, thank you, candidate Cook. Candidate Barlow?
Well, I'll open with equitable impact. There is no dispute in terms of the benefits that many families and their children have derived from a smaller school learning environment and the challenging curriculum that is offered there. The good news is that highly gifted program is being expanded to additional middle schools. We still have the issue, though, what do you do with a small school? The truth is, the community has grown, and with that growth, facilities have been built. So we're never going to be able to turn the hands of time back, but we should also be aware of the current and future impacts of students, those families that are currently enrolled, and those who may be on the list or who have been hopeful to potentially attend a small school. I think, though, what this pandemic has done is created an opportunity for us all to realize that there's multiple ways for our students to achieve and to excel. And so let's not limit ourselves based on the models that we have. Let's look futuristically toward what can be.
Thank you. Candidate Barlow, this next question comes to you first. What can schools do to provide special support to minorities of all kind?
Very good question. I think what schools can do, and it's really more so what the district and specifically curriculum and instruction can do. And what I believe in part, I'm going to say at least two things. We'll introduce We'll introduce an anti-racism curriculum, okay, which basically acknowledges that there are social and cultural aspects to our current educational system, not just here in Rochester, but generally speaking. And with that, it is heavily weighted towards those who are in a position of power and privilege. And so I would advocate for a whole life view, which is that of recognizing that everyone has wealth and value linguistically and culturally. Let's tap into that, build upon that, and then let's also provide staff and curriculum that reflects that.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Cook.
Yeah, so I think that anti-racist curriculum is incredibly important, and it is vital to the future of our success as a community. Because whatever steps we take to unleash the full potential of those on the wrong side of the opportunity gap, as it's been sort of studied for some time now, those benefits derive to the entire community, and they pay massive dividends down the road. If we want to grow as a community, we have to be intentional about unleashing that potential. So the benefits of an anti-racist curriculum, though, is it doesn't just benefit the historically disenfranchised or disadvantaged, it benefits everyone. It makes every single student into a better critical thinker, it makes them more ready to succeed in a 21st century economy, it makes them better at evaluating sets of facts and discerning patterns and being a more astute participant in current events. This is important for everyone, and we all win. So this is like a very easy one. As far as making our teachers more diverse so that they're a better reflection of our student body, this is also critically important, and there's room to be, to have a greater sense of urgency on that. This is an identified issue for some years now.
Thank you, candidate Cook. We'll go to the Post Bulletin for the next question, and you will begin, candidate Cook.
For the start of the school year, Rochester Public Schools opted to go with a learning model that was more conservative than it would have had to under the state guidelines. Obviously, the district will continue to evaluate the situation as the school year goes along. So as a school board member, what is your perspective about distance learning versus in-class? And how conservative would you be on that timeline in regard to returning students to the classroom?
It's a very good question, and certainly on the minds of many. As a parent and observing the events, you know, from my perch, as I did, I was surprised that the model that was offered was hybrid for elementary school and distance learning for the secondary grades. I'm not going to postmortem the analysis that was done and the work that was done by the committee and consultation with medical experts, including the county and Mayo and so on. But as far as I can tell, and I've been watching the numbers for some time, under the governor's guidelines, we should have been at the in-person for elementary school and hybrid for the secondary grades. We reached about 19 cases per 14 days, per 10,000 in the county. It's now at about 10 and 1/2. I don't think since July, it's gone outside of that 10 to 20 range. And so I guess that's where my starting position would be again, and I would be anxious to hear the expert advice that was provided to the school board and the task force that made the recommendation to the school board, but my inclination would be to trust the governor's guidance.
Candidate Barlow.
Yes, well, the old adage, the proof is in the pudding, and the conservative approach has resulted in the numbers we currently see. That's a good thing. What we don't want to see is a spike and a need to close, shut schools, as is the case with many schools across the nation, to include even the loss of some teachers who have been on the forefront of that. I believe there's always opportunity to reflect, and within the current model, though it's termed conservative, it's a model that is reflected and evaluated weekly and given major review every six weeks. So we'll be coming upon that benchmark fairly soon, within this current model as well. Decisions can be made to open up, okay, and/or if the need be, close down. So there is great, I think, wisdom present. Did it make everyone happy? No. Whatever we do, will it make everyone happy? Probably not. But I believe we did the best we could with the information we had, and I believe the community is a safer and hopefully more thankful community that we did.
Thank you. We're going to go to the Chamber of Commerce for the next question, and candidate Barlow, you will answer first.
So Rochester was recently awarded a grant to be the first community in the state of Minnesota to build a PTEC school, pathways in technology, early college high school. How will you continue to support programs and initiatives such as PTEC geared towards preparing our students to be workforce-ready by the time they graduate?
Well, good question, and that actual program will not kick in until, I believe, '21. And so we have time to plan. And part of that planning, and if you don't mind, can you quickly repeat that? There's a piece that I...
Sure. So Rochester was recently awarded a grant to be the first community in the state of Minnesota to build a PTEC school. How will you continue to support programs and initiatives such as PTEC geared towards preparing our students to be workforce-ready by the time they graduate?
Okay, thank you. So actually, you know, cradle to career is part of that community collective, if you will, that is designed to, I won't say ensure, but develop the metrics where that can be possible. The old view of college and career-ready begins at the time of birth. And so PTEC is just one of many innovative steps the district has engaged in to include last year, the launch of Incubator EDU. And so we're excited about the opportunity. The community, however, plays a significant part in the overall success.
Thank you. Candidate Cook.
Yes, so I was very excited by the launch of PTEC. I think it's absolutely the right direction for the district. I guess for those listening at home, the reason that, there's reason to be excited about this, is that it's a program where students go from ninth grade to 14th grade and get a bachelor's degree through partnership with RCTC, and then there's two different programs for 30 students each, a cohort through Mayo Clinic to get an associate's degree, and then one through, partnered with IBM to get an associate's degree. I think it's a terrific formula. It should be expanded upon as much as there's demand for it. And I also love Incubator EDU. As soon as that launched last year, I reached out to the folks running that, because I'm a patent attorney. I love working with entrepreneurs. I love tech startups. It's so exciting. This is how you change the world, and to get people excited about that is fantastic. I also think that there's room for improvement within Rochester Public Schools to encourage women to participate at a greater, at higher levels in STEM classes and that lead to technology entrepreneurship. Incubator EDU is a fantastic program. I can't wait for it to come up so I can be a participant. My time was canceled last year because of the pandemic.
Great, thank you. Candidate Cook, you'll answer this question. And first, how will you help close the achievement gap observed in our schools?
Well, yeah, so there's lots of different ways that the opportunity gap or achievement gap could be expressed. In test scores, in graduation rates, in participation in highly gifted programming. Students of color, students on IEPs or special education students, students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and students that are receiving English learning services are underrepresented in all of those metrics. So I think that it involves the same kind of equity work, and the core focus for me is on the culture within the schools, doubling down on the professional development work that's been done there, and add to it a culture of accountability. I'd be very supportive of, once the associate superintendent is brought onboard in the 2022 to '23, or no, it'll be in the, the current plan is to have an associate superintendent focused on equity in the '21, '22 school year. And I would like that office to have under their remit, some, like an ombudsman or similar role to receive and investigate complaints of microaggressions within the schools.
Candidate Barlow.
One important way to work towards the closure of the gap is by creating opportunities for families to be more involved and engaged. Oftentimes, because parents are working, many parents, not just one job, but several jobs just to achieve a livable wage, it's difficult for them to be more involved and engaged in the education of their children or to attend important meetings at the school. So I think by at least acknowledging that and creating pathways for parents to become more involved, as well as community organizations who are willing and who have pull from a huge retiree pool to be present and to serve as mentors. The responsibility itself doesn't fall solely to the classroom teacher, though, they play an important part. I think it is a community response and a role that we each can play to ensure that each of our children succeed.
Thank you, candidate Barlow. Yes, candidate Cook has a rebuttal.
Well, I want to add to the mentoring piece, because mentoring is something I'm very passionate about. Before I had kids of my own, I mentored the same student from seventh grade all the way through high school in Champaign-Urbana when I lived there. I thought it was a terrific program, and what made it work was that it was in the schools. There is no similar program here. I've reached out to the patchwork of mentoring committee, community resources in Rochester, and I think there's an opportunity for Rochester Public Schools to integrate mentoring formally within the schools.
Thank you. I just have a quick technology reminder, so we're just going to ask the candidates to wait just a beat before you start answering the questions, so we can get your mics turned on. So this next question actually comes to candidate Barlow to answer first. The community school movement provides more services for students. Should we have more schools designated as community schools?
In fact, the governor, just this past year, I believe, had visited Rochester to fully acknowledge the great job that's being done here as a result of community schools for the viewing public who may not be fully aware. We have several, and it just provides an opportunity. It's an acknowledgement, kind of related to the earlier question of achievement opportunities. It provides services beyond just, if you will, the educational realm for our students, some which have a number of challenges before them. So our schools are becoming not just a place for our students to learn, but to receive dental care, to receive other supports greatly needed, and I would greatly hope that we can expand them further. We have at the high school level, middle school, and elementary several community schools.
Candidate Cook.
I certainly think community schools are worthwhile. I think that what's being done at Riverside and at Gage and at John Marshall is phenomenal, and I'm missing one, the RALC. What I think should be, what I think the district should be very thoughtful about is how an expansion or continuation of community schools can be coordinated with the county. A lot of the services that are provided there are somewhat overlapping with services that would naturally fit within the county's remit. And I am absolutely not opposed to community schools, and I think expanding them is a great idea to the extent there's resources. I just think that it's a natural place to make sure there's tight collaboration with the county on what the scope is going to be.
Candidate Cook, this question starts with you. Later school start times have been shown to support improved mental health and school and test performance. Do you agree with this? And if so, how would you restructure secondary school schedules?
Yeah, so this will be, actually, this will be at the board meeting, it'll be discussed again tomorrow night. So tune in for the rest of the board's views on that. But what I think makes the most sense of the options that have been discussed so far is to move the elementary start time before the high school and middle school. It's difficult to have them all at the same time, for those that haven't followed the issue, because it creates transportation bottlenecks with the buses. And so you kind of have to stagger, either have the high school and middle school start first, then the elementary school, or do it the other way. And I like elementary before the middle school, I think that's a much better option. And the surveys that were done, both of parents and teachers, were generally supportive of that model. And even if it expands transportation costs just slightly, I think it's worth it to get better performance out of our students. The difficulty will be in what that does to after-school activities at the high school level in particular for sports. I'd like to see RPS lead the charge here and coordinate with the other schools that we compete with, so that it doesn't interfere with game schedules and things like that.
Candidate Barlow.
Certainly, well, that's called the bell time study, and it definitely will be on the agenda tomorrow night. A lot of hours have gone into the research of this. A lot of expert information has been presented and reviewed. And yet, sometimes we overlook the important voices that may be right there before us, the non-professional voices. Parent voice is so important. We heard, I heard from a number of elementary teachers who really did not, were not in favor of the earlier start for elementary kids. We're in a quandary, okay? What works? What doesn't work? I'd like to believe that we can maybe scam some information from distant learning, because there are some time parameters that kids are required to log on. And maybe we can see some corollary between how they're participating and how that may relate to in-person attendance. But I should also mention, the transportation costs will not be minuscule. They're actually in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not even closer to a million.
All right. This first question, or this next question, candidate Barlow, you'll respond first. Due to current events and a historical neglect of youth perspective in government, many youths are distrustful of elected leaders. How will you build trust in meaningful relationships with youth in Rochester?
Well, it really comes down to who you are. Less about what you say. I think that's what they have keyed on, and they're tired of just hearing people say what they think you want to hear. That's why I've always have stood on the premise of accountability, personal accountability and accessibility, which for those who have reached out, who've called, or for those that I've reached out to, I've demonstrated the importance of that. Our youth need to be aware of that, have participated in virtual meetings with Rochester Community Initiative at their request, along with other school board members. And there's a significant value their voices represent. We want to have them be a part of the process of problem solving. We want to value them and hear them, versus simply give them an opportunity to say something and then we do nothing. So just valuing who they are, what they have to say.
Candidate Cook.
Yeah, and with student groups, I mean, we're mostly talking about high school students. And what's happened this past summer with the Rochester Community Initiative, who I met with as well, and it's phenomenal. We should all be extremely proud that those students are either attending RPS schools or graduates from them. students are either attending RPS schools or graduates from them. But there's a turnover, you know? Four years is the term of a school board member, and that's also the duration of high school. And so what comes next after Rochester Community Initiative? I think that there's, my understanding is the student school board hasn't been the best way to get a reflective voice of students or an inclusive voice of students at the high school level. But here's another thing. If I'm elected, I'll be the only member of the school board with kids in elementary school, let alone preschool. And so I think it's more natural for me to be focused on the kids that are actually in the schools and what it's going to be like for them in high school because I think about it literally every day, every minute of every day practically. And so, yeah, it's both. It's being inclusive, it's being intentional, it's reaching out, it's making those connections, and just being who I am.
Thank you. Candidate Cook, you'll answer first for this next question. What policies would help to change the school-to-prison pipeline problem?
That's a great question. And it is a problem. It's definitely something that I acknowledge. I thought it was a very positive step that in this latest report of discipline data in the district in compliance with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights agreement that will be up in September of 2021, that when the disciplinary stats were reported, information about referrals to law enforcement and ultimate charging decisions were also provided alongside. I didn't mention it earlier, but I work for the Nielsen Company, the folks that do TV ratings. I run their patent program. And so I actually believe that measuring things makes a difference because it changes what people focus on. And there's a lot of power in deciding what you're going to measure and what you're going to report regularly. I certainly think the district should continue to report that. And I think if we change our relationship with the student resource officers within the schools, we should absolutely see if that makes a difference and learn from it. But being transparent about what is contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline within our schools is important.
Candidate Barlow.
Well, the first thing to do is to acknowledge the existence of and denial. There have been those who would say, well, what are you talking about? There's no such thing. And perception can, however, become a reality. And yet, even statistically, we do know in terms of referrals to Rochester Police that those things occur. Now, I've asked, along with other board members, for the Rochester Police to provide dispositional information. What happens after, and I'm still waiting for, and maybe when we have the study session, will be provided that information. So yes, analysis is important. Decisions then can be made regarding the data that will be presented. But accountability is another huge thing. The earlier question regarding our position, should there be SROs in the school? I think if there are not, then we may not even have to deal with this issue.
Thank you. Candidate Barlow, you'll answer this question first. What do you feel is the ideal division of the roles and responsibilities of the school board versus the superintendent? And how does your vision match the reality of how things are right now?
Well, the truth is, the roles of the superintendent and school board members are actually a part of legislation. I mean, you know, it's not a role we take or assume. It is a role that is thrust upon us, interesting enough for the viewing public and maybe those even present. School board members of all elected positions in the state of Minnesota are the only, is the only position where you're actually required to be trained upon being elected. And part of that training includes understanding the role of, okay? So there's no confusion. I'm going to use these terms, governance, okay, management. The role of the school board is that of governance, okay? The role of the superintendent is management. Example, the board can, much like with the equity position, we requested that money be set aside for the possible funding of a position with certain responsibilities. We worked our way through that drill. I said, well, that's really a responsibility of the superintendent. And so he has responded to our request to develop an equity position.
Thank you. Candidate Cook.
Yeah, so formally, the school board is providing the what, and the superintendent is providing the how. The school board provides the strategic direction. The superintendent implements that vision. But in the corporate world and where there's a CEO and a board of directors, there's a lot of blurriness there. And I understand that this isn't the corporate world. But it's okay for the board to share some implementation suggestions for the superintendent. And the superintendent ought to be collaborative and receptive to those ideas. If that working relationship isn't fruitful for all parties, then it's going to be difficult for everyone to be successful in getting to the best version of the district long-term.
Thank you. And with that, that actually ends our question portion. So we'll move into closing statements. And candidate Barlow, you will begin.
First of all, again, thank you for hosting this event. And thank you for those who have chose to view this in real time and who will view it later. I believe every child attending Rochester Public Schools should receive a high-quality education that is representative of whole view and world-class. I believe these challenging times can bring out the best of our children and educators. Education and innovation must be a part, must be a priority of all that we do from cradle to career. Thank you for the opportunity to serve these past four years. And with your vote and your involvement, we can work together to support, acknowledge, and celebrate the success of our students. Thank you.
Candidate Cook.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you to Don for his service on the school board and for being here to discuss these important issues tonight. We have trials coming up in the next four years. We get to decide what our future is going to be like as a community. When the new schools open, one of the first topics that the, that the next school board is going to be addressing is where the boundaries are going to be. Rochester's not done growing. We're going to continue adding to our population. There are going to be additional opportunities to build more schools. I want a tighter collaboration with the city, the county, with Destination Medical Center, with anybody that has a strategic interest in our future as a community. Because I'm certainly going to be here in 20 years, and I want it to be the best version of itself that it possibly can be. I care about it for my own kids. I care about it for everybody's kids. I care about it for myself, frankly. And that's why you should trust it. The reason to vote for me and not Mr. Barlow is because of my perspective and my passion. I am zealous about conveying opportunity to every single student because that's how we unleash their full potential and get to the best version of our future. I am invested in creating school environments that build community for every single student and their families. And I have a vision for Rochester as a center of excellence, a place that people want to move to, want to stay at, that helps our employers attract and retain the best talent. If you share that vision, I hope that I'll have your vote.
Thank you, candidates. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind you that the views expressed in the forum tonight were those of the candidates, not those of LWV Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thank you to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, and the Rochester Public Library. Remember that Election Day is November 3, and early voting starts September 18. If you have voted by absentee ballot and would like to change your ballot based on what you learned tonight, visit mnvotes.org for more information on the process. Please do remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place or you would like to see your sample ballot, please visit vote411.org. To see this forum again, access the forums from the Rochester Public Library website. Good night, everyone.